Somebody there.
All right. We're going to have a call to all of them. Thank you very much for being all there. Thank you. And thanks, Marion, for advising us. We'd like to recognize our Channel 32, Corey McCarthy and Alan Bright for Temple Star. Thank you so much for doing that.
No last name, Steve Morgan.
Does he look like Alan Bright?
No, you see, last time I saw Alan. Sorry, Mr. Simon, but we're happy you are here. All right, we're going to have an opening prayer for Councilor Barnes. Thank you very much.
Our Father in Heaven, we're thankful for the opportunity we have to be here serving on council this day, and we're grateful for the opportunity we have to serve our community. Pray thy Spirit will be with us as we discuss the important things that are on the agenda tonight, that we will be blessed with insight and be able to say and do the things that will be helpful and productive and blessing to our community. And we pray thy Spirit will be with us now in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Well, it is a great pleasure to have a delegation of people from our town, employees from our town, and we would like to call on Noel Smith to come forward. We are recognizing them for years of service. Noel, if you would like to come here. Noel has been with the town for 25 years. She started in the office and little by little kind of found her way to the finance department and for many years has served us very loyally. She had a wonderful and strong learning curve a few years back. What was that, five years ago or so?
Seven.
Seven years ago, when she was left with very little knowledge of what was going on, but a chair, a job, and plenty of ledgers.
Lots of background information.
Right. And Noel has done a fantastic job raising to the bar and working her way to the point where the auditors always praise our accounting department. So Noel, thank you so much for your faithful and loyal service, and please accept this little token of our appreciation.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Maybe you'll show us.
Can you just make sure we have a good picture of that cast before?
Okay, you might have to come back a while because I want a good picture. Okay, there you go. Got to do it official.
Who's doing the picture? Oh, okay, good. You're gonna be better, Ron, you haven't.
Get out of here. Ken said, Ken.
No, definitely won't.
Bart, at word, so good to see you and to see you healthy.
Yes, it's great.
Last year was not the same story in Mobile, Poitou. Bart has been an employee of the town for the past 22 years, 15 years full-time and seven years if my math is right, part-time. And Bart started in public works and then went to water and waste water and then climbed up the ladder and became the manager of the water and waste water. You know, it is very often said that no town can survive without good water, and we are grateful that you always have sought to innovate, improve, and try to work with all the engineering departments that you had to host when projects came our way to make sure that everything went tickety-go. So thank you so much for all you did. And you're always so pleasant to give us a two and a smile.
Always have to.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thanks, Bart. You can't go and retire yet.
Yeah. Don't be getting any ideas.
Thank you so much. I know you are probably busy, you probably have other duties.
Yeah, it's the honey duty.
Can I ask a personal question before you run, Bart? How many of those years that you've been working for the town have you been involved in scouting as a leader too?
Oh, forever.
I was gonna say, you were probably in scouting before, and you're still in scouting.
Yeah, I'm sure those are in commission.
Amazing. Bart's a busy man.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks. All right. Okay, let's go to item three, additions and adoptions of agenda. We have an extra item that have been added that you will have under seven G, is the RMRF conference, which is the paper that is on your table at this point. Okay, so with this addition, we need a motion to adopt the agenda. Councillor Barthes is adopting the agenda. Any questions? Seeing none, I call the question, all in favor. Thank you, Carrie. All right. Just a little bit before we carry on, a little bit of housekeeping item. We are trying to adjourn around 6:20. The reason being that we will have a follow-up session to our planning session to kind of flesh up a little bit what we did and to carry on a productive one hour and a half session. That's about what we have in mind. You will be served supper at this point. So just for the members of the media to let you know, the official minutes will cease when this portion of council is complete, and after that, you are welcome to stay, but there won't be no recording of minutes. You can see what we do. Okay? Thank you. Now we need to go to item five, adoption of minutes. You have them, those are the minutes of the regular council of January 14th, 2014. I need a motion. Councillor Barnes is putting motion forward. Any questions regarding those minutes? Seeing none, I call question, all in favor. Thank you, motion carried. All right. Under item six, business arising. If you remember, we had Corporal Brown who came and visited us and gave us his quarterly report. And a question that he raised at that time was to ask if council, well, he didn't really ask, but maybe the question would be to ask, would council be interested to have an ad-hoc committee to try to see the issue regarding detachment and proper policing force in town? Is that something you would like to pursue? If that is the case, what I would suggest we have as a committee would be the CEO, the mayor, and two volunteer councillors.
Councillor Bantry.
Before we continue on, our funding for the RCP comes from the province.
Correct.
I'd like to know when that was established, how many officers we had in Cartson? And I'd like to bring that officer delegation back up to where that funding was provided. If we had five officers responsible with Cartson, then we should have five officers responsible if that funding is still the same.
Okay, Councillor Bantry's point well taken. What we need to do for that is to have that ad-hoc committee because that would allow us to address those questions. Councillor, please.
Kind of what I understood from the agenda that they were asking us if we'd like to formally request more members for our council, and I feel we should definitely do that.
And I think the proper way to do it is to do a proper study through an ad-hoc committee that would then make the recommendation and move forward. And if that is a recommendation to council, then we will take the step, the next step, which is to address the issue at the provincial level. Would that be all right with you? Okay, so here's my next question. Who would like to be on that ad-hoc committee? Councillor Barnes, Councillor Bantry. Thank you. Okay, so I will be sitting with those two councillors, Councillor Barnes, Councillor Bantry and...
Do we need a motion?
Marion, we're going to do it by way of motion, yes. Okay, so who'd like, Councillor Bantry, do you want to put a motion forward?
Yes, all of them. We form an ad-hoc committee to...
Explore.
Explore the policing in our community and that Councillor Bantry and Councillor Barnes work with the mayor on that.
Right.
And Marion, I'm CEO.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, any question regarding councillor?
The minutes are supposed to have nine officers and two public servants.
That's what I need to have today, but that's already, I understand, a reduced force from what it used to be?
Yes, they're down by three right now.
Okay. So, any other questions? Seeing none, call question, all in favor. Thank you, motion carried. Okay. We need to go out to item seven, a request for decisions. As you could see on the seven A, there is an MGA review, and you might have become a little bit confused as I was. There are two MGA reviews, one that is led by AUMA, which will be January 31st in three days' time.
That's in Lethbridge.
In Lethbridge at the lodge, and we intended all to go and to, to capital, to go there as much as possible.
Have you been registered, all of us, for that?
Marion has done that for us. The other review is done by the government, and that one is on February 28th, 2014. Now, the question I have for you is as follows. After the AUMA review, we will have a better sense of where we're going with that review. So the question is, do we all need to go, or do we send the mayor, delegate, council? What is it that you feel will be appropriate at that point? I know that very often you say we have to be careful about the cost, and I don't disagree with you.
I would wager that it might be beneficial to hold off on that decision until after we've gone to this MGA review.
We have to register.
We have to register. Okay. Where?
It's in Lethbridge at the lodge also.
Oh, is it? Okay. And the reason I said what I said is I just, you know, I'm not sure if AUMA is going to suggest that, hey, we all go en masse and really push a certain specific issue or three, or if we're just going for information, that it's going to rehash what we learned at AUMA.
It'll be a different take.
Right.
Because one is representing the municipalities, so that is one point of view, and the other point of view will be driven by the government, and I don't break them out, not any more than you. So would it be wise to have at least two councillors going, or three, or do you feel you all would want to go?
I know for me, I'm really learning and I want to learn these things. I want to understand what's, you know, what's going on.
Going on, okay.
And I would like, I mean, it's easy for me to get away because I'm my own boss, so I don't have to ask permission from anybody to go. Personally, I would like to be able to go to that and learn.
Okay, Councillor Bantry?
The question I would like to ask in doing that is what would have the greatest impact? Would one councillor, could one councillor or two councillors have as much impact on the session if, you know, if we had more of our council there?
Okay, well, that's what we're trying to determine, right?
Well, again, it comes back to Councillor Pivoy's statement where he says, for the impact, what kind of impact and what are we dealing with?
A lot.
AUMA is going to give us, like the mayor said, a different perspective, but they are going to touch on all the points. The government's going to bring it up.
Yes.
But we need to know what those points are before we...
If I can direct you a little bit, the government has put on their side already a survey and a synopsis with questionnaire, so you can already understand what will be brought up at the table there. And they already were asking for many months now some feedback regarding that. I had filled that questionnaire, and if any of you have a chance to go and take a little bit of time to read it, it will give you some sense of the different area in the MGA that might be crucial to us all.
If I may, I think since the issue here is meeting maybe a registration deadline, I say we maybe register all of us and then we can reassess, because I'm sure cancelling isn't going to create any problems.
That's a good idea.
Okay, all right, so that is a decision. Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Mayor, is our CEO going to be attending that also?
Okay, let me tell you what will happen. Our CEO will attend the AUMA, and then she will attend a special CEO meeting by the government.
Good.
Okay, so it's a different type of actual...
It's on the 27th.
The day before.
And the assistant will also be there?
I don't think so. Normally, we don't both go to those, one or the other will go.
No, it's an all-day thing, right?
It's from May 34th.
The question I asked, Jeff, do you deal with MGA stuff?
Oh, yeah, yeah, but between us, we...
Between the two of you?
Yeah, one of us stays here and holds court.
Okay.
You mentioned a survey for the MGA. I didn't see, I don't know if it was on our email, but I don't...
It's in the, it's in the AUMA strategies and stuff for council. It's in that.
On the list of things there?
You're right.
Okay.
And Marion reposted that again today, I believe.
Okay, so we can get in.
Well, I've signed you all up for it, so you will be receiving it automatically on your email.
Yeah, so there's a new...
Okay, so it'll be coming on.
Yeah.
I know I have one on there.
That's the survey that will be coming?
No.
It will be sent.
Yeah, it's a pre-survey.
Okay. Excuse me, just for clarification, what Councillor Bantry's talking about is your AMA news for councillors?
Yeah.
It's, there's a link on...
It's on one of those items in there.
Okay, does it tie into...
And fill it out, fill it out like the mayor did, I did too.
Okay. Now, seven B, retail market value. As you can see, it's a very complex electrical problem issue, and we will ask Marion to give us a little bit of an update. It's quite complex.
In your package is a bit of a synopsis from Kevin Phillips regarding the retail market review analysis that's been undertaken by the province. What this is really for is that the province is proposing that they remove the regulated rate option because by allowing that regulated rate to exist, the argument is that they're not really creating a free market because there's a benchmark set, and they feel that maybe the retailers are using that as a benchmark, and if they stay just slightly below, that it appears that it's a competitive market, but it's not necessarily the case. But by removing the retail rate option and some of the options that are here will have an impact on us as a distribution company. We have responsibilities for those who connect to our service to provide the retail side of things as well. And so right now, our contract for the RRO is handled by NMAX. We have NMAX Energy and NMAX Power, both that provide a portion of that contract, of course. So I hope you've had a chance to read this because it is a fairly complex issue, as the mayor said, but Kevin has done a good job of trying to lay out, you know, what we're talking about here tonight. I just, what I want to address is the options that are being proposed. There's a number of more options than this, but the other options that are, or recommendations, I should say not options, the other recommendations that are, the committee is considering have either no impact or minimal impact on our operations, and so we haven't addressed them here in this report to council. Kevin was able to access this report. We haven't been part of that process. We were part of the original consultation, but we haven't been part of the committee as a representative from industry. There has been, of course, representation from all levels of industry at that table, but, so this isn't necessarily a public document that he accessed yet, but he took some of the information out of that to discuss with us as AMS groups and with his council. So there's three recommendations that are probably going to have an impact on us, and I just wanted to address some of those. The first one is a recommendation that perhaps would standardize practices and processes. It sounds reasonable, right, that there should be a standard across the province? The concern we have is right now, under our terms and conditions in our contract with NMAX, we've adopted their standards, and so we, in our opinion, we're compliant with standards. But we don't know what will be those new standards, and so the question needs to be asked is the level that we're currently providing with those standards appropriate? In our opinion, we're now compliant, but we don't report directly to AUC just because of the relationship, and so this recommendation would then require that we do that. So we just would ask that committee, what are those standards and are those changing from what we currently have? The number 10 there on your sheet, it says eliminate location-based barriers to consumer choice. It's the opinion of AMS communities that we currently don't have any barriers to retailers in our zone. We allow, they have to enter into a contract with us, they have to provide security deposits and some of those things, but we have not eliminated the opportunity for any of the retailers to operate in our zone, so we feel like it already is very free.
Just a question. Does that, does that mean that they could choose to go with another carrier other than NMAX?
Oh, yes.
You can do it now.
They could use Epcore here in town?
You can use any retailer that has an agreement with the town.
I see.
And I believe my last report, I had about...
Three.
No, I have about, I'm going to say somewhere in the range of 20 retailers who have the authority to operate in our town. Now, they would still get a bill from NMAX because NMAX supplies the services for a portion for our responsibility. What we're talking about here is retailers and strictly the energy consumption. Okay? So right now, today, anybody in the community, any business resident, whatever, has an opportunity to choose from approximately probably 20 retailers, and I'm sorry, I don't have those numbers. Some of them are kind of overlapped, like NMAX, for instance, will have NMAX Corporation, NMAX, you know, they have a number of different names, but operating as NMAX. The number 39, REAs in municipalities, compliance with the tariff billing code and system settlement code. We feel that there's an assumption that we are linked in with the REAs. Some of the REAs in the province are not currently operating under current legislation, and so we want to be clear to this committee that the AMS groups don't want to be lumped in with that and that we are compliant with current legislation so that it doesn't have any negative impact on us. But it appears from their statement there that they perceive us to be the same, and we're not. So if we go to recommendation options, the ones I really wanted to talk about here is if, if the province were to choose option one, leave things status quo, obviously, there's no impact on us. We just continue to do business the way we do business today. Option two, to expand the regulatory authority of the Alberta Utilities Commission. There's a lot of detail in what that means, to expand their authority, but ultimately what it means to us is that we will have an increased cost with our contracts with NMAX because there would be additional reporting requirements, additional data collection, those kind of things that right now we can't even estimate what those would be. We have started those conversations with NMAX, but right now we don't know what that would be. Option three, the electricity distribution operator licensing system administered by the AUC. This is the most comprehensive of the options that they're proposing, but will have the largest impact on our operations. Not only would this impact potentially any contracts that we have with NMAX Power or NMAX Energy, but it would also have a significant impact on our local operations. It could potentially mean that we would have to have some capital investment for different types of metering and different types of data collection. It means that our guys on the ground would have to track things differently than they are today because basically we would be issued a license and then we would have to fully report on our distribution system from the minute detail to, you know, the most significant impacts directly to the Alberta Utilities Commission. So we feel that option three would have a significant impact, but again, we don't have the analysis done yet because we don't, these are just simply discussions at this point, right? So we're proposing that the AMS members would only support option one, that it remain a status quo. We feel that we have done a good job managing our systems. We feel that we take our obligation under as distribution facility owners seriously and that we manage our systems wisely, and we, we don't feel that we're experiencing the same billing compliance issues that the REAs are. We have contracts in place with NMAX Power and NMAX Energy to ensure that we are compliant with legislation. We provide standardized enrollment. We have disconnection practices in place that are using the NMAX standards that we feel meet the requirements of today's legislation. NMAX Energy is our RRO default supplier, the same as they are for the city of Calgary. We provide the performance monitoring data, and this is one of the areas, the recommendation that's in here that would have a big impact on us. Just sorry to digress for a moment here. They're suggesting that we should have to report to the Alberta Utilities Commission on every power interruption within our distribution system, date, time, length, all of that. We do not have the manpower nor the infrastructure in place to be able to do that. Now, do we have very frequent interruptions? No. But every minor interruption, if there's a bump on a power, we need to report that. So those are the kind of things that we're saying will have a huge impact on us, right? Right now, for any major issues, NMAX is... Right now, for any major issues, NMAX is making those reports on our behalf. We're not clear at this point if they're, if we're grouped in with theirs, or if they're reporting us as a separate zone, but it's being reported. Again, there's no location-based barriers. Retailers are welcome in our community, and welcome in our, you know, to provide those One of the key things is that the AMs members, or so our site counts, our, our customer base is so insignificant within the province, that to implement all of these changes, there's no cost versus benefit there. You know, if we have substantial cost, it's distributed amongst our 1,500 customers or 1,400 customers, so, the benefit to the overall service, or the overall compliance in the province is nominal, if the AMs groups are, are grouped in with some of the larger supplier, or distribution systems. And then, any expectation that requiring customers in AM zones to bear that added infrastructure and administrative costs will not improve the retail market, and the attitude that that is, it's actually misplaced. So, we're proposing that the AMs communities be differentiated as small munis, and defined as so in, in any legislation that comes forward. We do not want to be grouped with the Red Dears and Lethbridge. Obviously, their customer base is much larger, they have the ability to do things that, that we don't. We also don't want to be grouped in with the REAs. They operate a little differently, and they, they are intermingled with other large distributors as well. And we feel that the efficiencies gained through any of these recommendations, really, for our customer base, there's no benefit to that. So, we're recommending that two letters be sent. One to this committee, the Retail Market Review Committee, and I also am suggesting that, on the political side, prior to these recommendations going to the minister, I think we need to voice our concerns, both to our MLA and to the minister's office, so that they understand that we have some concerns, because if we don't have a lot of influence at this committee level, it could simply be passed if they're not aware of our concerns. So, I'd like a motion from council to send those letters if possible.
Okay. Thank you, Marion, for this extensive report. I know you were on the phone two hours with a teleconference, and it's amazing how much you know and understand, and I understand the complexity.
It's amazing how much I don't, too.
You sound pretty knowledgeable to my taste. Okay, we have a motion on the table. We're going to take the motion, and then we'll ask for questions, if you don't mind. So, Councilor Bantry, do you want to express your motion?
I'll make a motion that we write two letters. One to the review committee, stating that as being a member of the AMs community, we stay with the status quo, option one, and also the letter to the MLA and to the government, to the minister, that we are extremely concerned with the review and the options that are presented.
Okay. Do you want it, is that wording that will be all right? Thank you. Okay. So, here we have a motion. Question?
Marion, I just wanted to know, and I'm, probably the question is, is probably not really necessary, but I just wanted to know, you've been in communication with the other smaller communities, and their feelings are similar to ours?
Yes. Actually, we meant, well...
Kevin's been doing it on our behalf.
Yeah, Kevin's been on our, on our behalf. We did have, as the mayor mentioned, we had a conference call with Fort McLeod and Pinoka. Crowsness Pass was not in that call, for whatever reason, they weren't able to be there, but we discussed this in depth for about two hours, the other day, with Kevin leading that discussion, and they all, of course, already have exactly the same concerns we do.
Basically, this is deregulation, and we all know what deregulation does.
Well, and, and...
You know, it's re-regulation.
Yeah.
Hold on a second.
It is deregulation, and, and that was the intent of deregulation in the province originally. But this regulated rate, and I, do you all understand what the regulated rate is?
It's a base.
If an individual does not choose a retailer, we as a distribution company have to supply a regulated rate, which is set supposedly by market value and all of that kind of stuff. And so, part of our contract is, we actually have NMAX working on our behalf to determine how that rate is, and of course, it's approved by the province and all that. So, they want to eliminate that, right? But with that, they feel that they need to put more regulations in place, perhaps, to ensure that it's still a fair market process in the province. For us, it's working. It's amazing, the percentage, and some of the questions that have been asked to the committee through, you know, the original consultations back in May of 2012, I believe, they were asking for our input from distribution companies, is if it's broke, if it's not broke, why are we fixing it? You know, it's amazing, the percentage of people in the province who have not chosen a retailer. They just use the regulated rate. And the government's response to that was, it's because people trust government to be providing them with the best rate, and maybe that's not what should happen in a free market environment, right? But, when, you know, I see us as a distribution company, when all of a sudden, we don't supply the regulated rate, and so we have a thousand of our customers, or 900, or 800, or whatever the number is, coming and saying, but where do I go? How do I get, how do I get a bill? How do, how do I continue to have energy, right? So, I see this as really causing a lot of confusion in the province with elimination of the overall...
Thank you.
Well, Marion, like you said, it's worked for us. We have everything in place. We, we don't have to expand any facilities. Our manpower is, is staying the same, the billing is staying the same. Why are we changing?
Okay. Anybody else may have a question that didn't have a chance to talk?
One last question, maybe put it in layman's terms. If we make significant changes, it potentially could increase the rates for small municipal utilities like this.
It will, it would increase our distribution component and the rates. It may, the government's argument is that it may reduce the energy portion of your bill, but we as, as the distribution company, know that it will increase the distribution portion, because we will have to recover those costs through our rates. It's rates and taxes when we only have those two sources.
Well, you have to hire more people to do the job.
Potentially, potentially, yeah.
Marion, do we have any indication as to which direction the committee is leaning at present?
I don't. I don't.
I think Kevin does a very good job on our behalf, and is quite, very astute in understanding the changes, and led us well up to now, so I'm really grateful to Kevin for being so thorough in his analysis of the market and of what's going on around all those changes.
Can I just add one more thing to that? With the letter that he's currently drafting to send to this committee, we've also sought legal advice from a gentleman we've used in the past, who has some expertise in the retail, or in the energy market, you know. So, we want to make sure that what we're addressing with this committee is what this committee really has the authority to deal with, and that is the legislation side of things. That's why I feel it's important, and I appreciate your support, that, that we also entertain some discussion about the political side and the, the impact on our residents.
Thank you. Councilor Bantry?
I wanted to make a comment. I think it was two years ago, at the AUMA, I went to a session with, I think with the Energy Consumer Advocate, just talking about the, the different rates, and he, he laid them out, you know, we, you know, the companies come and they offer you a contract to do it, and then he, he had a lot of them kind of listed out there, and anyway, the long and short of it was, was about four out of five years, the regulated rate option would have been the best choice for all of those, you know, out of all of those choices that they had for the, you know, for the contracts for the company, so the regulated rate option has worked for us.
Okay. We have a motion on table. We now need to go and have a vote on sending letters, and sending letters to our MLA and to the Minister of Energy, Diana Queen. So, all in favor? Thank you. Thank you, Marion, for this report. It's complex, but, but really impact us. All right. Let's go to 7C, is transportation strategy for Alberta Consultation. The government has again opened a consultation, consultation session that will be in Fort McLeod or in Lethbridge regarding the future of transportation throughout Alberta. It's not just local, they're trying to do a little bit of a visioning exercise, and trying to see what could be beneficial to the economy and the growth of the economy in this province. So, my question to you is, does council feel it's best to attend this session, and if so, who would like to go? I surely cannot go on the Lethbridge session, so I could only go on a Fort McLeod session, I suppose.
When is this? February?
February 4th is in Lethbridge.
Lethbridge.
Which is our CCW.
And February 3rd is the Fort McLeod.
Right. And it is, I don't know if it's the afternoon session or the morning session, I think it's from 1:30 to...
The Lethbridge session, the Fort McLeod session is in the morning.
I think it's the afternoon. Oh, is it the morning? I can't remember.
It's 1:30 to 4:30.
Yes, that's what I thought, that's what I said.
It's like it's evening, it's like they're all evenings.
Yes. The Fort McLeod one is 1:30 to 4:00.
4:30, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Is that the one?
Yeah. Okay. So, give me a little bit of a sense, who would be a councillor interested in participating in this public consultation?
I'd probably...
Would you like to go, councillor Barfus? All right, so, anybody else? No? Fine. So, councillor Barfus will represent us at the table. Thank you, councillor Barfus.
That's the same day as our council meeting?
So, you will go this...
I'm gonna go to Fort McLeod at 3:00.
In Fort McLeod, right. Thank you. Okay. 7D is OSK, OSK is offering an information session on safety codes. I talked with Marion regarding that, and we felt that maybe what could be done for us is for administration to kind of give us a debrief at one of the CCW regarding that, because they have all that knowledge right in-house, and it's a little bit redundant for us to go there to only be given the knowledge that in-house they can give us at this point. So, would you be agreeable to have administration do that for us?
Well, administration has to handle the safety codes.
Well, it's done right through all the departments.
You know, what does it do with, what does it do with the council?
Well, that's a very good...
Well, I was just wondering if it has anything to do with, with our municipal workers? Is there somebody there that maybe could go along with you?
This is for mayor, this is for mayor and council.
It's not for...
Nolan could go as a development officer, but he's, he's fully aware of our requirements under the act. And the quote, the part that refers to council is the quality management plan, some of those things that you adopt, and accreditation for the municipality, so I said to the mayor, I could give you a quick 10-minute, five-minute presentation and cover everything you really want to know.
Just give me a sense that, would you be agreeable to have administration give us this? Okay, I see now, so that's the way we're going to handle it, council?
Is that the same time as that other one we're going to be attending? Or conflict management?
The 20th, yeah, probably is a negotiating effectively, right? That's what we could do anyways.
1812.
You ever have the meeting here?
Okay. So, it will be a CCW item, at one point or another. 7E, Etna Irrigation District. Administration has asked council approve the renaming of this committee from Etna Irrigation District to Etna and Levitt Irrigation Districts. Am I correct, Marion?
Yeah, because the committee has always just been, councillor Barfus is assigned to the Levitt Irrigation Districts, so we, we belong to two irrigation districts, so really, it should be called the Etna and Levitt Irrigation Districts, as your committee assignment. I didn't get this till after our last meeting, and we missed the date, so I apologize, councillor.
So, you're good for another year?
I doubt we missed as much, but...
Okay. I'm going to tell you that January 23rd meeting dealt with the year and audit report.
You gotta wear your butts for hat.
So, recommendation, is that all right for administration to do that? Councillor Barfus, you fine with that?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, so this is for administration to change that designation. 7F, history of Carston research grant. This really intrigued me and excited me, and I thought it was a wonderful idea. As you can see, there is a Dr. Gottfried who has roots in this part of the southern Alberta, in part, in fact, in Carston. His father was a former mayor of this town, and he desires to write a history of Carston. He is, he is, has a doctorate, and what he's looking for is for a letter of support, what we need is a letter of support prior to submitting the grant application to the province in a total of $12,525.50, precisely. And that is a matching grant, so half of it is what he will donate, from what I understand, am I correct? And the other half would be the matching portion, that we would be, as a town, the support recipient of, and we would be the submitter of the grant. So, I need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. So, councillor Edmonds has a motion on table for a letter of support prior to submitting the grant application to the province for a total amount of $12,525.50. Any question? No? 50 cents is a full divided by two S.
Probably fine.
No? All in favor? Thank you. All right. Now, let's go to the addition, the AMR. So, here you can see, it's again an annual municipal law seminar. It's in surgery this year, and it would be matched at 14. Now, here's a little bit of a background on it. It's different from the Brownlee Seminar. There's about one item that can overlap, and so, it's, it has potentially much interesting sessions, as you can see on the back. So, the first session, everything you want to know about property assessment, but we're afraid to ask, well, that's... afraid to ask, well, that's something interesting. Planning and development law, that could serve as well. Burden of the 21st century employer, the ever-expanding rights of employees and union, pecuniary interest, conflict of interest and bias. So my question is, is anyone willing to register? It starts at 8:30 in the morning. You would have to leave at about 4:00 in the morning.
Or go the night before.
That's on a Friday.
I'd be interested in that.
Okay. Anybody else?
I'd be interested in that.
Okay. All right. So councillor Pivoy and councillor Barfus would like to go.
Jeff will attend.
And Jeff will attend, so you were trio. You can take a pick. Thank you very much.
Get two of us to keep the other guy awake.
All right.
So there'll be no going the night before because we can't trust.
Thank you very much. And all that will request from you councillors is to bring back a written report so we all get some kind of information. If there is some paper being passed out, try to get a few more copies for us all. Thank you. Now, let us go to item eight. There is no financial report this month. As you remember, Marion mentioned that a financial report will probably come in March this time, just about at the time of the audit.
We will be providing next month a budget versus actual for January.
Okay.
But you won't get the December report because it'll just change anyways.
Okay. We're doing quite well. We're going to start with our committee report. We have about 30 minutes to do so. Okay? So let us start with 9A, Market Surveillance Report. What I need is a motion to approve the report. As you know, we always have that surveillance report that is given on our behalf. Thank you. Councillor Pivoy will do so. Any questions? There was no unusual things happening this past month, so are all questions all in favor? Thank you. 9B, as you can see, is the town motion list, the council motion list. This is for your information unless you have any questions regarding this list.
What is WGR? Is it part of that welcome package?
Welcome, it's likely welcome work, but I don't know what it's called.
Why am I drawing a blank?
Yeah, it's a welcome something, but I can remember...
Town sponsor welcome package.
Well, it's the organization that deals with that. Anyway, we shall find out for you.
Yeah, well, it was a direction from the meeting on January 7th.
Yeah.
We'll get the... Sorry, I'm drawing a complete blank up here.
I mean, I understood what it was, is what it is. 9C is a new report. It's a CEO report. Marion, do you want to explain a little bit what you intend to do? No, just explain the intent.
Yeah, I will explain. The first thing I should say is it's not going to be this long every time.
But thank you for the comprehensive report. It surely gave us an eye view of all what you are dealing with on a day-to-day. Thank you for that.
Yeah, there's a number of things that happen throughout the month that don't necessarily end up on a council agenda, but it's good for you to be aware of that. So things that I would be involved with, or things that some of our other departments are involved with. So I will compile on a monthly basis just a short report about, you can see, you know, I talked about the sharing service review and the Chief Mountain Solid Waste Authority project. In the package this time, of course, is all of the department annual reports except water, wastewater, and I've now received that, so it'll be on my next month's report. But just to give council a bit of a sense of what's going on on some of these ad hoc bases that you wouldn't normally have on an agenda.
Thank you very much. I found it very comprehensive and really very informative. Thank you. And I also feel that when we do your evaluation, it'll give us a better sense of the trends and the different directions.
So you're telling me I better do it right then?
No, I found it very useful. 9D, Canada's Momentual Update. Jeff, do you want to talk?
I'll speak to this, actually, because I asked Jeff to put this together for you. I just want a council to be aware that there's been some discussion at that level to formalize that group. And so at the next mayor's meeting in the CIOs, we will have a draft of the governance model for that. And they've talked a bit about relationship with other organizations, and we've talked about Alberta Southwest and Chinook Country and the Canadian Badlands, all of those organizations that we know are great organizations and could bring some benefit to our marketing, perhaps. But there may be an opportunity to still partner with those organizations in a little bit of a different fashion. So rather than having every municipality belong to every organization, perhaps we can better manage those resources and still contribute to those organizations, but also benefit from them. So I just want you to know that that discussion was taking place at that level. And once we have that, the next meeting, I believe, Mayor Cronin is in March, and we will bring then that governance model back to council so you'll have a better picture of how that's happening.
Thank you very much. In fact, I find it fairly exciting to know that we might be able to be an organization that now has a different kind of power and influence. Might be interesting. All right. So there we come to 9E, to the committee report. And I want to congratulate you all for the fantastic job you've done at forwarding your reports to Marion and for them to have compiled that for us. It was interesting reading. Out of that reading, I have a few questions that seems to have come up that we might have to deal at this table. First of all, there are some reports that I have not seen, and I'm not sure, it's because the meeting didn't take place yet. So I'm just going to call the one that I seem to have missed, and let me know if I'm wrong. The Handy Bus did not have a meeting?
No.
No meetings, that's what I saw. The Agricultural Society?
I have that report with me, but it was just an AGM. It was an AGM with a new board elected, so nothing substantial as far as material, other than the new board, which we'll be reporting to administration.
Okay. Perfect. The Chinook Foundation, I believe?
Chinook was again mine, also here.
That's all right.
The, there was some discussion about some budget items, primarily, we restructured, we have a new chair, and again, those will be on the new printout with the new names.
Russ Moore, that is the new chair.
Yeah, Russ is the new chair.
So you will provide those and we'll get them next?
So that when we get our new committee reports, that'll be...
Next month? Okay, that's all right. No problem. Thank you.
Those come out on the first Tuesday, the committee report.
Fire, I understand there was no meeting. The meeting is tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night. Like the reading.
So intermunicipal development, we had no meeting as of yet.
You have a date now?
Yes. The Leavitt Irrigation meeting, we just talked about its pass say, I understand. So beside that, there, as I read all the report, there are a few councillors whom I would like to ask a question. Councillor Barnes, you ask in your report if you were to go to that conference, library conference, if the town was going to pay for your two-day per diem. My question to you is as follow. If council is willing to pay for your conference fee mileage, are they not paying per diem?
No, they don't do that at all.
They don't do that at all? Is the library board willing to pay your per diem?
No, they have told me that the town, I am representing the town, and so therefore the town should cover those costs.
Okay. So Marion, this is the answer to the question. Do you want to add something to that?
Well, all boards, I shouldn't say all boards, but boards are different, and you'll find that some do and some don't. So, you know, not sure what their policy was. But personally, if, and the policy says if the councillor is representing the town of Carston, and he should be paid, he or she should be paid for their per diem. So I think it's a benefit if they're paying mileage and your registration, so it would just be the per diem.
Okay.
So you would just claim that, okay councillor, on your own?
Yeah.
Okay. So that is fine. Councillor Bantry, I have a question for you regarding the airport. In your report, you mentioned that there are two new hangars being built, or one has been built, the other one is not yet built, from what I understand. But you were talking about associated costs for extending the runways or the gas line.
The taxi runways.
Okay. And from what I understand from past practice is that the town has always had in their agreement that the one who built the hangar are the one who deal with those associated costs. Marion, am I correct?
Yeah, that's been the practice in the past, both for the gas line extension and the, well, the taxiway. It's been up to whoever's building the hangar to do that. And I think, I talked with Leonard, and he understood it that way as well. So I don't know if there was...
So we don't provide the right way for the gas extension?
We provide the right of way, but we don't pay for the cost of the gas extension. They have to make those arrangements through Chief Mountain, and there is actually some hangars out there that don't have gas to them because they chose not to pay that cost.
Okay. There is another item in your report. You're talking about the fence. Help me understand a little bit what the issue is here.
I really don't understand it myself, because we didn't have a meeting out there. Maybe councillor Creed. They have to extend the fence on the east side or something like that? Around these hangars, these new hangars or something like that?
Do you know what?
In the past, the town has donated pipe and stuff like that out of their yard, and they've gone ahead and...
Yeah, maybe just have, is Leonard the president now?
He is now.
Yeah. So they can just come in and talk to us, and they can arrange whatever, because I know Cole's done some well, they do a few things like that.
Okay. Thanks. And councillor Barfus, you mentioned in your waste management and SEWA that there is now the problem to send a representative of the waste management to SEWA. Help me understand, because in the report from the minute of SEWA, it tells us that councillor Gates...
Gates.
Yeah. I said Gates, because you know what? We have the same genealogy of the same area, so I pronounced it the right way.
No ego involved.
No. So councillor Gates is part of the board of director of SEWA right now?
Correct.
So is the waste management board still paying for his expenses?
Yes and no.
Okay. Help me understand.
So the argument that's come up is the solid waste management actually isn't a member of SEWA.
I understand.
Individual communities are. And so there was some discussion over whether or not solid waste should be paying for his expenses, or whether that should be being covered by...
Glenwood.
Glenwood. And solid waste approved him to go on a quarterly basis, but because he is now a member of the executive board, he's going on a monthly basis, and so the costs have gone up quite significantly.
Well, it was about $10,000 last time I was there.
And they have moved, many of the meetings are being held at the Far End Brooks, and so it's starting to get fairly expensive to fund going to those meetings on a monthly basis.
Okay. So what, are you trying to tell me that that means it's going to affect our requisition? Is that what I'm trying to understand?
It will have an impact on the requisition if we continue to pay for it. The board is tabled to tell our next meeting.
Okay.
That's one of the things that's being, will be discussed at that meeting.
Okay.
The two things that I actually need from council on this is, we are currently a member of SEWA. Many of the other communities on the solid waste board are not renewing their memberships.
Okay. We have renewed ours, and ours is, if I remember right, is 43 cents per capita.
Yeah, it's about 14, 15 hundred dollars.
Right. So we are still a paying member?
We are a current paying member.
Which means that we have a vote on a table if there is an AGM.
Correct.
If you are not a paying member, you have to pay the two years that have been in existence in order to have a vote.
Right.
Yeah. Councillor Creed?
Okay. This is, I guess, a direction, you know, to councillor Barfus, but it'll have to be a direction from the community, or the council as a whole. But I feel that very strongly that you can't separate the solid waste authority.
SEWA.
Our garbage is going one place, and the garbage from Raymond and McGrath and all of the other communities is going to the same place. It has to be all or nothing. I mean, it has to be that the whole solid waste authority has to belong to SEWA, or it doesn't do any good really for the individual members to belong.
Except that SEWA doesn't belong.
That's right.
The solid waste authority doesn't belong to SEWA.
Yeah. Well, they need to either, you know, pay the membership for all of the...
And that's one of the things we've been talking about. The argument, as it was made in our last board meeting, was that the reason for belonging to SEWA originally was that if you wanted to have your garbage taken there, unless you were a member, you weren't going to be able to participate in that. And the argument that's being made now is that they're going to be, if it gets built, they're going to be in such need of garbage that it won't matter whether you're a member or not, they're going to take everything you give to them. And so some of the communities are saying they just don't want to pay the fees, and it will probably be a majority of the communities on the board that are not members of SEWA.
Okay. What's happening now, from what I understand, is it's going to wait a little bit like this. SEWA has a drop in revenue of about $20,000 right now, and it's going to kind of regulate itself in 2015.
I just have one question in the governance model then. If Chief Mountain is not a member...
No, it's not.
Then how can a member of Chief Mountain be on the board?
That's right. He is a member as Glenwood, as Glenwood being a member, and that's one of the discussions that's being had over there right now. So technically, he's representing Glenwood, not Chief Mountain.
But Glenwood doesn't want to cover his costs.
You got it.
That's exactly the right answer.
If we have to pay the costs, then maybe we send our representatives.
Okay. One child come in?
Mayor, for our viewing public and also for our press, maybe these acronyms need to be spelt out so they understand what we're talking about.
Okay.
So, Chief Mountain Regional Solid Waste Authority is where our landfill basically is and deals with our garbage. SEWA stands for the Southern Alberta Energy from Waste Association. And it's basically a plan that eventually would have an incinerator that creates energy from waste products.
Then now, my question there to councillor Barfus. If these other communities have, are opting out of paying their membership, we're going to wait to see what happens?
Yeah.
Before we pay our membership?
So our membership fees are paid right now, okay? And are paid up till...
Hold on, you had a comment.
For 2014, correct?
2014 is paid, yeah.
Right.
We just paid them.
So some of these other communities have not paid their 2014. So by our next meeting, this next month in February, we'll know... we'll know which communities have decided they're not going to be paying their membership fees.
And then you just said that even if we weren't members, SEWA is going to have to have our garbage to prove to...
In order to be viable, they're going to have to have our garbage.
So, then if that's the situation, why do we continue to pay our membership?
That's the question.
It gives us a vote.
Right, and that's going to be the question.
Let me tell you what is written in the document. When communities want to reintegrate SEWA in time, they will have to pay all the areas. Right now, we are keeping ourselves current. And this will, in time, not give us a $5,000, $6,000 bill.
But all that does is give us a vote on their...
It gives us a vote, but it also gives us current.
Does a couple things, gives us the vote, as Marion kind of alluded to there, while they're going to take everybody's garbage, the reality of the model that's probably going to end up is that towns will be paying to move their garbage to it. And you'll want to be paying that because it will be cheaper than using the landfill.
Right.
And that's the model that the province is starting to build, right? It's getting more and more expensive to use landfill, that's the purpose behind it. And they'll continue to make it more expensive to use landfill. So, we will have the advantage of paying a lower rate to ship our garbage than what somebody that didn't belong to SEWA is. Interview?
Okay, one more comment, and we will move on to another committee.
So, this is the difficulty I see, is that, you know, if we can, you know, ship our garbage there, you know, reduce rate because we've been members, and Raymond can't, how do we separate that? And this is my feeling, is it?
Marion?
I think another important factor of our membership is, in order for this project to move forward, they have to have members.
Then it's support.
So, if we see value in this project, that's why we stay members.
Right.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, I think...
And that was my greatest question with...
Everyone back, sir.
That was my greatest question with the landfill. On one hand, they had a member going to SEWA, and the idea was to reduce waste. And a landfill did not want to adopt that model, reduce waste. And I could never understand how we could not have the two meet. Anyway, Councillor Creed, I have a question for you. In one of your reports, the community in Bloom, you said that you needed to have council approve?
Oh, community cleanup?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm glad you asked me, because I was going to bring it up, but you didn't. I was asked to...
I did research before.
Thank you, to bring to council a request that we put on the agenda, a cleanup for the community. I mean, we've typically done, I mean, they've had a Moses Lake cleanup. What communities in Bloom want to see is a town Cardston cleanup that would involve the community, as something that we do as a community, and have a cleanup week or a cleanup day, and it might be in connection with the town. The town already does a cleanup week. Maybe we could involve, you know, volunteers from the community to make it a, you know, a more general cleanup of our community and, you know, picking up garbage, things like that.
Councillor Creed, with that in mind, the town has a week where they do the special picking up of the refuse and stuff, tree branches and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
Is this what you're talking about?
This is kind of what I'm talking about, is we do that where the town cleans up, but we also make that a week or take a day in that week where we ask volunteers from the community, whether it's church groups or service clubs or scout groups, let's look at our Lions Park, let's look at our Main Street, let's look at our creek, and see if we couldn't get groups or organizations out and just do, you know, like we do, like we've done kind of with the Moses Lake cleanup, only let's concentrate on our own community.
Just a second, can you, Marion, a second?
It's okay, I just, during the Moses Lake cleanup, we have had people from the Ninth Avenue Bridge to the Second Avenue Bridge, so the creek is cleaned up that same day.
Right, I know, we have that, that happened this last time, I know that did.
Probably four or five years now.
Last few has been happening, okay, which is good.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody else would like to have a chance? No?
Then my next question.
Just, I mean...
I was just thinking that this might be a good opportunity for some of the elderly that still are in their own homes, who haven't been able to clean up their own yards, have been, do participate in this. I know, over the years, I've heard people, I mean, I get into my yard, but I've heard other people say, well, you know, I just can't do it, I just don't, I don't have the energy to do it. But maybe we could involve the community groups, church groups, to help clean up some of these people's yards.
Okay.
That would be great.
Okay, good, you know what, the time is short, so if you don't have anything more to add?
Councillor Bantry?
Councillor Bantry, you want to add something to the discussion?
Yeah, I'm a little bit concerned about this cleanup, because is, how's our supervisor of public or recreation, parks and recreation, is he on board with this? We're almost stepping onto his...
No, he is part of...
He comes to the communities in Bloom, so he's part of the Communities in Bloom committee. But anyway, so for, you know, brevity, if we could put it on an agenda for a, maybe a?
CCW.
CCW meeting, that would be my request, and then we can have this discussion.
Yeah, but it's a good point, Councillor Bantry, we should never bypass the people that are part of the department.
Absolutely, because he knows what public areas he has to clean, he knows what manpower takes.
Yeah, I appreciate your concern, but he's sitting on that committee. Okay, let's carry on, so, well done and good discussion, thank you. Correspondents, so it's the Southern Alberta Energy from Waste Association, they have a conference coming up. So, there again, there would be Councillor Barfus that is interested there, but I would imagine if you have Councillor Gates going there?
Well, that's where the question comes from, is do we want to be doubling up on that? Should I be attending those, or should we be relying upon Councillor Gates to attend them?
I don't think...
The question is, can you attend them?
Depending on when they are, yeah.
Is his reporting sufficient for you to hear about the progress of the...
Normally, yes, he actually does a good job in his reporting.
He's quite thorough with his reporting from what I've heard.
He wasn't at our last meeting, which is why it was tabled until the next month, so...
But the problem is, is if they're not going to be paying for him to go, he's not going to be as interested in attending the reporting.
Exactly.
And so, we're going to need Councillor Barfus's input there.
Well, we're going to need to, you need to find out what the next board decision will be, and then maybe there's just time to decide. Okay, fair enough?
Yep.
Alberta Recycling, for your information?
Go ahead. Just a suggestion maybe to Councillor Barfus that make sure this gets to the Solid Waste Authority. There's some, there is a session at that conference on landfill litter control that I thought might be beneficial for one of their people to attend.
In general, we...
Speaking of our manager?
We have tried in the past to send one of them, but we're not very successful.
I was just wondering if this would be of value for maybe our transfer station operator to ask, attend that?
Administration can maybe decide on this one, because they're on a contractual base.
Yeah, when I looked at the agenda, really, it was the landfill litter control that I thought would be best, was worth going to, and that wouldn't necessarily benefit us.
Maybe not, I'm just, I'm thinking that, I know he's interested in enhanced recycling, you know, there's discussions I've had with him when I went out there, and I thought there might be some areas that he would pick up some ideas from to help.
But it's contractual, so he would have to kind of look at that himself.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, 10C, Legacy Partners? Well, that is to let you know if we need to get rid of our CEO, there is a place to go to find him.
I found that rather entertaining.
We're not there, Marion, not there.
But if I ever need to...
Great, you filed that away in a safe place.
Around a safe place?
10D, yeah, sometime we do have some funny stuff coming up. 10D, we have... Thank you. We have Emily Jeff Wilson, who is now the official municipal affairs opposition critic. So, that's for your information. 10E is a notice from my quarters, talking about the distribution rate. And as you are aware, Kevin had predicted the outcome of this discussion at a provincial level very well.
Sure.
And we had already made the adjustment, okay? So, at this point, I believe we are pretty well completed. It's 6:20, and we have done very well, congratulations to you all. Thank you, so motion to adjourn?
We should want to discuss that legacy later.
Maybe we should go into that, in camera.
Yeah, Councillor Banry, want to know if we need to go in camera?
And excuse our demonstration?
No, if you want to have that discussion, you better have me there.
It's going to cost you somebody.
Give you some ammunition.
That's right.
Those remain when you laugh, but that was the actual true case of the town of Holdales a few years ago.
Oh, I know.
Where they had a whole brand-new council, and the CEO was let go. And they had, everybody knew in that whole organization. It took them years before they could really restart this town.
They haven't got over here.
Down in Pinoka no longer has their same CEO as of last week either.
Really?
It happens quite frequently with new council.
And so, that is a little scary. Another one is Cole Hurst.
President's pass is not a number.
Yes, and Cole Hurst has the same, Cole Hurst?
We're not being recorded anymore, are we?
Has the same kind of problem, a first council meeting, decision prior to CEO. That's a scary proposition. Thank you for being so stable, you know.
We are all in a small...
I don't know.
It's one thing our voters expect of us, is that we're keeping a close eye on you, so...
That's right.
If they're still recording, we're doing just that.
I had another thought on that letter to sign. Didn't the county use one of these finder organizations to find, not the CEO, but the employee, and kind of got burned on that?
Yeah.